The December 13th, 2023 special city council meeting is called to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business here in the meeting, please move for a recess. If you're participating telephonically, please move your phone unless you are speaking. Also, when speaking, please state your name for the streaming of the meeting. As a reminder to all attendees, the meeting is being streamed live. The camera is located directly in the back of council chambers above the clock. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Crafton?
Here.
Councilmember Vlach?
Here.
Councilmember Rubio?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard is absent and excused. You do have a quorum, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers Graham, Crafton, Vlach, and Rubio are with us in chambers. Councilmember Johnson is participating telephonically.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. And Elena, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item of business is approval of the agenda. Before the agenda is approved, are there conflicts of interest to declare? Hearing none, are there changes to the agenda? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. We are on to persons to be heard. It's time for members of the public to share the views with the council. This is not a question and answer period of time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the council or administration. There is no one present in the audience, so we will close public participation. We are now at new business. Madam Clerk, please read the item by title.
Thank you. Discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the goals and initiatives for fiscal years 2025 and 2026.
Okay. Is there a motion to enter committee of the whole?
Madam Mayor, I move we enter committee of the whole to discuss, consider, and possibly take action regarding goals and initiatives for fiscal years 25 and 26.
Is there a second?
Rubio, seconds.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graham and suggested by Councilmember Rubio to enter the committee of the whole. Is there objection to the motion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk. We are now in committee of the whole. The time is 6:03 PM.
Ma'am?
Okay. The way we're going to do this tonight, we are going to start with, on our sheets, we've got one through five for the first goal. Is there any changes to any of the one through five under ensuring efficiency and accountability in local government for the benefit of Wasilla citizens?
I'd like to hear a little staff summary from these different things. Little words are kind of not very explanatory, so if we could get a couple more sentences, that would be nice. You know, I mean, the first one is pretty sustainable biannual budget where operating expenditures will not exceed operating revenues. But it doesn't really talk about CIP or any of that sort of stuff, but, you know, because that is, you know, capital projects are part of the budget. What we're only talking about here is operating expenditures and all. I'm not dissatisfied with it. I'm just not sure if that's all we need to talk about Ted or if that, you know.
Through the council to Councilmember Graham.
Yeah, it's on.
Oh, it's on. I think this one's particularly, you are correct, is stating that we would have FY25, FY26 budget where our operating revenues equal our operating expenses, not discussing the amount that you want to have for capital projects. I think part of that comes into, as I was looking at the goals and objectives, you want at least 1.5 million for capital projects for paving those items. And I think we are going to be discussing more in January, the five-year capital plan and how much would be needed to fund that. So again, I think that is something that if you wanted the administration to come forward with as a suggested amount that we need to include out of the whole pie for capital projects, that that's something that administration could come up with as part of the goals and objectives.
If you will look where it says Department Responsible for Supporting Specific Budget Initiative, and whoever's responsible for supporting this goal, they've got an X under their little name, so.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. I didn't, probably, through the mayor to Councilmember Graham, if you look at...
Sheet seven to 12.
Which one is this?
Sheet seven to 12 right there.
Yeah, seven to 12, that they do discuss continued local roads and other capital projects, but it doesn't give a...
If I may, Mayor, so if you look at seven to 12, like Mr. Leonard said, that next goal is supporting comprehensive long-term capital fiscal plan for city infrastructure. So it has its own segment, if you will, and like Mr. Leonard said, it's, this first goal is to have a balanced budget for operations. Are you upfront about that?
Do we want to mention in here that we want to have a certain, you know, fund balance or not have a negative change to the fund balance or, I mean, it's easy to look at the budget and say, well, you know, we're bringing in $33 million in sales tax, and we're going to get $14 million from the state and $12 million from the Fed and go from there, but all that money, all that match money is not coming up out of here. I mean, this all makes perfect sense, you know, to not, to not have your operating expenditures exceed revenues, but revenues aren't really earmarked as operating or not. To me, the fund balance, the bottom line of the fund balance is where it's at. I mean, if the fund balance, you know, continues to grow slightly or, you know, not have more than a one or two percent change or something, to me, that's a more measurable goal than this one here. This one here is, I'd be happy either way, but the fund balance to me is, at the end of the day, what we're going to have.
If I, if I may, Madam Mayor, well, so I think, I guess the question is, the first goal, city shall pass this sustainable biannual budget in which operating expenditures will not exceed operating revenue. So there's opportunity to be more specific about CIPs and that, but the idea that, so that doesn't talk about fund balance, right? So it's comparing operating expenditures with operating revenue. And so if it's decided that we can't operate with revenue that we're receiving, there's a question to be made. Do we need to dip into fund balance? Or if we think of utilities, do we need to raise rates? What do we need to do to make ends meet? And that's where I think, you know, the discussion is a broad one to have amongst the council and staff, but the goal is that we aren't living on savings for too long because, you know, enterprise funds are expected to carry themselves through their revenue sources. So if, for instance, utilities was having a problem making ends meet, the question would be, do we need to address it through rates or do we need to, you know, dip into fund balance or whatever the council's decision is? And so I think in this example, is what's listed in number one still the goal? And does the council have a sense on what the reaction would be if we couldn't meet that goal? And so I think it's not all encompassing for the financial picture, right? It's just one facet.
And I agree with that. I'm not saying that, but I'm just saying the term operating revenue, as far as I know, isn't defined anywhere. I mean, we can call anything we want revenue. We can take in, you know, $35 million in sales taxes and spend it all on operations and say that that was okay, but that doesn't mean that, oh, by the way, we said we're going to spend a million and a half dollars paving roads, we said we're going to spend 800,000 dollars.
That would be operational revenue, right? So there is, it is kind of, it's broken down in the budget and like we know that fund balance, or I'm sorry, enterprise funds already have operational revenue inside of them.
You're chasing a different tail from the dog than I'm...
I think you're, I think you're thinking details that fall out as we get further into the...
Mr. Leonard, do you know, if we were to look at previous years, and I know you're at a real disadvantage here because of your, in recent session to the finance office, but I mean, do you know how much of our sales tax revenue we spend on operating expenses? Is it, are there any things showing that in years past, we've spent 80%, 82%, 85%? Are you, I mean, you used to be the finance director, so you may have access to some historical brain cells back there, but I don't know that I've ever heard it talked about here in the council.
Through the mayor to Councilmember Graham. I, I think, I know what you're saying. You know, the whole item of the operating budget is that operating revenue, pretty much except, any revenue except for grants, for example, that for specific CIP projects is operating revenue. And so that's your pool of money that you really can use totally if you wanted to use it for operating expenses and not have any funds left for CIPs.
Which is kind of what the state's doing now, and you can see, you can see what great shape we're in there, so.
I can tell you, and I've been just looking at it, and it's, last year, our revenues over expenditures, including transfers to CIP and the general fund, had in excess of about $7.1 million. Because what I've seen is our projections on sales tax revenue was substantially lower than what actually happened with the economy and inflation. So the whole goal of this first statement is sort of a best practice for GFOA where they're saying, no matter what, you know, your revenues that could be utilized for operations will never be less than your actual operating expenses. It isn't stating that, hey, in this whole pie, excuse me, not hey, but when we're looking at the whole pie of monies that can be used between operations and CIP that we're not, we're actually saying by this next page that the Public Works Director was discussing where we say that 500,000 bench park for annual maintenance, a million for roads, and, I'm sorry, I've lost my...
He basically got it.
And then there was some other amount that, that's at least the amount we're going to utilize out of that operating revenues for CIP. It doesn't mean that the council can't state that you, you know, earmark more as we go through the process of the budget for CIPs. It's that balance, right? If you increase your CIPs, you have less of that pot, that pie for operating expenses, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does make sense. I'll let Mr. Crafton go since he has a question, then I'd like to come back.
Actually, that's what I was going to just mention, was it, from what I'm understanding about this one is it's more of just a general statement in this situation, as Ted kind of mostly said what I said in a better fashion since this is his area of expertise, but I think that's the gist of this here. And I see where you're coming from, where you're, it sounds like you're trying to quantify it to put a little bit more of a number on it, which I, I don't know if we can really do that in this case here, because again, a lot of this is projection based. So, yeah, I mean, it sounds good to me. Thank you.
So I guess what perhaps I'm getting at, in all my years on the council, I've always opposed the concept of growth of government without there being an associated true need for growth. We need, operating expenditures need to grow. We've got, you know, inflation to deal with, we have wages to deal with, we have certain things that are going to cause a growth in expenditures without causing a growth in government. But when you're talking about having $7 million, you know, bad choice of words here, leftover at the end of the year that we didn't plan on, that to me says, oh, hey, there's an opportunity to grow government without anybody really being responsible for that. And that's, that's my issue here. I mean, you know, the city shall endeavor to pass a sustainable budget in which operating expenditures will not exceed operation, operating revenue, and the government will not be grown somehow, I don't know, I don't have any idea what the right words are there, but I mean, we're not going to add new departments, we're not going to add new people, you know, I mean, that should be our goal unless we identify that right up front. That's, that's my worry. We have a bunch of money here, let's, let's not spend it growing government that we have to continue to feed in future.
Mayor, can I just add, you know, the audience here is really our auditors. This is a practice that the city has been through several times for our auditors. The goal is ensuring efficiency and accountability in local government for the benefits of Wasilla citizens. When you're talking about efficiency and accountability, that comes from an operating dollar. When the auditors, and correct me, Ted, but when the auditors look at a CIP, that has a different accountability and a different efficiency associated with it, because you have a grant that you receive money, you have to be accountable, you have to show that granting agency you're efficient. This is an operating conversation. We cannot mix a balance sheet and profit and loss together in this particular goal. This is that for every revenue dollar we get, we're going to be efficient, we're going to be accountable to the, how we run operations. And that's what the auditors look at, is how we manage our operating dollars, and then they look at how we operate our CIP, and then they look at how we look at other revenues that come in through a grant.
And that's the auditors, but we're the, we're the council.
This document's for auditors.
Exactly. We're the council, and one of our goals is to maintain the same size of government or to increase the efficiency of government without growing government, and I just didn't see that anywhere, looking through this in the last couple days, so.
Madam Mayor. And also, when you talk about growing government, I think when we do the budget is, you know, we might need to grow government, maybe the police need another officer, maybe the museum needs a part-time person. I also believe maybe that's when we, we address things like that, when we're addressing the budget. I don't think this goal's an initiative is where we address things like that, is what I...
And I appreciate that point of view, I just disagree. I think that's one of the basic goals should be to not increase the size of government without some sort of need to establish that.
And I, how, what I understand, just, you know, I always throw in MTA, but, you know, I was very involved in budget and goals and initiatives for MTA, and, and this is just, you know, a goal is different than your budget and what your, you know, what, what you're, it's what you, you don't want to do. You don't want your operating expenses to exceed your operating revenue. I mean, I think that's just a goal that probably every business has. I think it is just a statement. I don't think it's where we're delving into the budget on where we need to grow, where we need to cut, capital, budget. I just don't think this is placed, and we've spent 20 minutes on it, so that's just where I'm...
I disagree. This is the foundation for the budget, and, you know, I'm just letting you know what my concerns are, so.
Madam Mayor to Councilmember Graham, I, I agree with you. This is the foundation of the budget. And again, this one, it does say in the goal that is keep local government efficient and accountable to citizens. This first one is pretty much a, never will we ever have a, pass a biannual budget where operating expenditures will be over, exceed operating revenue. Then you come down, will plan and improve existing services. So I think, again, this is a ceiling, and then as you go through your rest of your goals and initiatives, that, that comes out during the CIP process of how much you want of that original pie to go towards CIP, and then that's how the budget is built.
I agree. I'm just putting forward my point of view that one of the keystones should be, you know, not to grow government unnecessarily, but I, I'll agree with Ms. Vlach, we spent enough time on this, so.
Anything else on one through five?
So on the three, the ensuring a fair and reasonable burden on property owners, that's new this year, isn't it, that phrase? It's always been just to maintain a zero mil property tax rate. Is that correct?
Yes. Through the mayor to Graham, that is something that we added because several times people ask why we have zero property tax. Why, why do you guys have zero mil property tax? Why? And so we wanted to add a little bit of verbiage of why we do that or what's the reason for the zero property tax? We're open to suggestions. We could delete it.
I think once again, this is just kind of word fluff here. I mean, the city will maintain a zero mil property tax rate. I think that...
Can I delete it?
Point of...
There's other, other folks to speak to.
Again, yeah, you want to try to get consensus, so one, you know, we want to try to at least get consensus of four.
Yeah. I don't see any reason to add it, so, so yes, I would be in fact with deleting.
Do you?
I mean, I get that it's kind of word fluffy, but I mean, it does make sense having something there just to say, hey, this is why we're doing it. So again, I get where you're at, Mr. Graham, it's word fluffy, and it does serve a purpose, I think.
Rubio?
He needs to be there, it's good. It's like the highlighter.
Vlach?
I mean, I think it's fine. I thought it was fine before, but it's fine now, and we do add a lot of, there's nothing wrong with adding some fluffy words or more detail.
Mr. Johnson? Okay, we are on two, enhancing and expanding the city's technology infrastructure, number six through nine.
Madam Mayor, we'll take them in order, but I got something on nine, nobody has anything else.
On item eight, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with ensure the city remains at the forefront of technological advancements. For a city of 10,000 people, I don't, we're never going to be at the forefront, but we're definitely going to want to be right there and be aware of best practices out there, you know, that the city prioritizes awareness of best practices and technological advancements, I think would, I mean, we're 10,000 people, we're not going to be at the forefront, we're not going to be making any huge steps forward in technology because of Wasilla, even though we've got a great staff, no, that's not...
Mayor, can we comment on that?
Yes.
So keep in mind that it was about two years ago, we implemented the online sales tax. That has been doubling in its revenue, and if we wouldn't have adopted that, we would have lost out on revenue. The same thing with some of the short-term rentals, looking at technology that's provided through, you know, RMB or VRVO that we can adapt to quickly. That's really where the genesis of that came through.
It's not how I read it, but that's up to you. To me, I read it as we saw something out there and we adopt it. I don't see it as we develop something, which is kind of how this reads to me.
Madam Mayor, or, Mr. Graham, would you think like the word current or up to date would seem a little bit more correct for that, that term?
I'll leave it where it is, you know, as long as, you know, we're not spending $100,000 a year to try and develop new code when there's, you know, things are out there that we can use.
You put edge in there. It means at the edge of techno, you could take forefront out.
Which edge?
You don't want to be the lead dog? Come on.
Madam Mayor, I, I think I would just speak to us being aspirational in this, right? And while we are only a 10,000-person city, we serve most of the borough, right? And with that comes vulnerabilities that we need to be prepared for, we need to protect against cyber threats to our network, to our infrastructure. And so I think that while we may feel like a small fish in a big pond, we are nimble enough that we need to be responsive and protect our citizens. We don't want to hit the headlines for Flint, Michigan water issues, and because I think we're in a sweet spot for being able to see what technology's out there, and we're big enough that it's useful, but we're not so big that we have to die by a thousand cuts for billion-dollar projects. We can be, we've got a really good team that can see what the industry's doing, we're plugged into, you know, cybersecurity groups, water and sewer groups, and we're in a good spot to say, do we want to just pass a technology by? Has, has the industry been at a state so long that we want to go by that and we can make some pretty educated decisions with consultant help, with expert help? But we don't, we don't have to, we can, I think we can be aspirational as we look to threats and respond accordingly, so.
Well, I'm just going to shut up here because I'm talking, because I'm talking to the wall here. I mean, we've got AML, we've got National League of Cities, we've got all these people that we pay to be at the forefront, and then we say, hey, what's going on? So that, so that we can follow along the best practices, but I'm done.
May I, because Tim Johnson, so we add, should we put best practices? He said cost effective.
Mr. Johnson, you're fading in and out, we can't understand what you're saying.
I caught a little bit of that. It sounded like you said maybe just add best practices.
Okay, I'll try to get it.
There we go.
Okay.
Let me try and add this.
That's a little better.
Okay. Between best and practices, but cost effective.
Are you on number seven, Tim?
Yes.
We're on eight.
I'm sorry?
That's okay.
We're on number eight.
I do think Mr. Johnson brings up a great point, that's, we may not be able to always afford what is the best practice out there, because it's, best practices may offer way more options than we need. So cost-effective best practices is a good, good thing to say. Thank you, Tim.
Okay, what number are we on?
Seven.
Going backwards, we're on seven. Is that what we're doing?
That's where Mr. Johnson was, yeah.
No, we're going backward. What was his, where does he want it? I'm sorry.
So on the third line of number seven, Mr. Johnson was suggesting that we add the words cost... the words cost effective after the word and.
Or best.
Okay, we need a consensus.
Cost-effective best practice.
I like that idea. I think it actually encompasses a lot of what Mr. Graham's concerns might be as well.
Nikki?
Either way, I'm fine with it. Not that, you pick a deal.
It's fine. If that's where they want it, it reads.
Okay, then you're putting in cost-effective best practices. Okay. Is there anything else on six through nine?
Jump into nine, Madam Mayor. I know this is on our agenda next week. Could I get a short summary as to what this one is a little bit more entails?
Through the mayor to Mr. Crafton. Oh, there we go. So post-pandemic, there were a variety of applications that were currently running when it hit, and then there were applications that were launched somewhere in between that. And then coming out of COVID, there were a number of different systems that were running. But then there were also departments that were very manual. And so in our conversations, especially with cybersecurity and network security and some of them, we had to look at the entire operation and say, okay, where do we prioritize how these processes are going to be scalable and they're going to be protective? And we did not have a blueprint, if you want to call it that, to even know what we needed. And so what this is going to do is look at every process from the way we do a purchase order to the way we buy a vehicle or manage fleet, and what's the process? And then more importantly, where are we most vulnerable? And the most vulnerable part may be writing manual checks. But at least we have a recipe for how we prioritize going forward to maybe keep some of the applications, maybe not, maybe add some, maybe centralize. So if you go to open a business, you don't have to call one department for a license, one department for a permit, one department for a sign, one department for driveway. You may be able to have one platform do that. But I think it's to the best interest of the residents to know that we're doing our homework, and we are looking at how we're going to protect our systems and also manage the cost of labor.
Thank you. Look forward to working on that one next week.
All right, anything else on six through nine? The next one is promote a strong and diverse economic base in the city of Wasilla, number 10 through 16.
Got one on 13.
Okay.
This one again might go to you, Ms. Nygaard. What, I'm just making sure we're staying out of the housing business. And, and so what, do we have anything in mind already that you wanted to speak to, or?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Crafton. So what we are hearing from employers, and I think this is everywhere across this area, is that there's tax credits available for seniors, there's tax credits available for low income, but there's no real financial incentive from the workforce. So if we had an employer move here that had 1,500 employees, where's the incentive to divert some of that construction dollar into workforce housing? So this is really a letter of support of what agencies like Alaska Housing Finance Corporation is doing. When they come out with something that could be an economic driver for us, we would give them a letter of support. But it's not in our interest to be in the housing business or subdivision business because it is a cost associated for the city. So it's more of a support to our neighbors, friends and neighbors and general contractors that are trying to say, how do we deliver affordable housing and job training at the same time?
Thank you.
Can we take a brief adieus, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I think your mic just might, you've lost that mic. Test, 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 test. Maybe you can just share until I do. Maybe I don't have to talk.
That was very strategic.
Test, test.
There it is. Okay.
Could you change the wording? Currently it says implement top priorities. Change that word to, change that to implement top goals. Strike priorities and ensure goals.
I think that's supposed to be and.
Yeah, strong and. Strong and. There we go. Thank you. I'm with Mr. Graham on this one here. Again, it's just making sure our language is in line, and it's because our said states their goals, not priorities, so we're wanting to just correct that.
Elena? Nikki? Okay. Any more on 10 through 16?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Can we just have a little clarification on 14? What is the regional technology hub? What are we, what is that? What are we hoping to accomplish there?
Through the mayor to Ms. V. Lock. So that was one of the goals, was to diversify the economy. And tech hubs is something that has been incentivized primarily through these different acts that have come out of DC to understand, do you have an ecosystem of tech workers? Or do you have jobs that, say someone coming out of high school that doesn't want to go to college, can just learn in two weeks or two months and, and get into? So we have made a collaborative effort with MTA, Connect Tribe, and Wasilla High School to be a collector of employers that are looking for STEM students or stems that are look, or students that are looking for STEM projects. And we're getting some momentum in, is there a market there? Is there jobs out there that maybe we don't know, or students out there that have talent we don't know? And so it's really exploring how collective we can be with these different partners and bringing some information back to you.
Okay, anything else?
Madam Mayor, on 15, we have a phrase in there that says expansion of local control. I know where we're going with this, and I agree with it 100%. I'm just not comfortable with the word expansion, perhaps strengthen local control, or, you know, exercise more local control over factors of business development. Obviously, we're talking about, you know, Article 10 of the Constitution says, you know, maximize local control wherever possible. And then the legislature is, of course, the limiting factor on that, and the governor can limit that as well. Expansion is just a dirty word in government. I'd be happier with something that said strengthening local control, or having some, somebody who has a source in their mind come up with a different word.
Somebody got a source.
We're phoning out.
We've got to build it right in.
Are we trying to grow it? Is that what? Not just expand it, but?
Well, we are trying to grow local control.
Right?
You know.
I think support might be a good word.
Well, if you don't like the word.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I just think expansion is going to, kind of has a, it doesn't have a kind of a flat effect on people. It has a, has kind of a negative connotation to people, whereas a word is trying to exercise local control, or you've got their increase local control. I think increase is a good word.
I would go with increase.
I, support was also a word, you know, that I liked that word. I think it's just supporting the local control.
I want to support increased local control.
Yeah. Support increase.
Yeah, it should be increase.
Okay. All right. Anything else on 10 through 16? We are on to 17 through 22, supporting a comprehensive long-term capital and fiscal plan for the city infrastructure.
Madam Mayor, number 19, local improvement districts. This is just to find areas where we can do better. Is that what I understand?
For instance, if you want to tidewalks in your neighborhood, in all your neighbors, that's great. Then we could do LID where we fund the whole project, and then you just pay for it over time through your, you know, some sort of assessment. Does that, would that be correct?
Through the mayor, sometimes. And also the idea that, especially on commercial developments, if there is extra infrastructure needed for like a hotel or some, you know, larger expansion than we're used to, there might be a vehicle where those developers are assessed, you know, extra development costs because of that desire. So there'd be a vehicle to partner with them, but also not bear all the development costs because of this, you know, broader development, infrastructure expansion. So it kind of touches both residential and commercial.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So a couple of things here. When I look at 17, you know, develop a comprehensive cost and user fee analysis. To me, that sounds like a fancy way of saying dream up new taxes. I don't know what we're saying there, but user fees is generally a nice way of saying taxes, without saying taxes. So what, what is the user fee analysis? Are we saying if we're going to fund the library, we're going to have a user fee to do that? If we're going to, you know, build a new city hall, we're just, we're just going to have the people that work here pay for it? I'm not sure what we're saying there.
Yeah, through the mayor to Graham. So the genesis of this was our user fees have been cut from other cities to towns like what they're charging for parks, and we just charged them that. And so really looking at what, what does it cost us for this service? And, and is our fees reasonable and acceptable to what we're offering? And some of our fees have not changed in, in a decade or 10 years. And when you go in to look at some of your valuable services, and they're 50% less than anywhere else in the state, I think that's a reasonable conversation to say, this is what our costs are, and this is a reasonable fee. To say we're never going to have higher fees is, is kind of disingenuous to the residents.
I'm not, not suggesting that. I'm just saying user fee sounds like I go to the state park and I pay $12 for my day pass. To me, that's how I think most people look at user fees.
And that's what we've been doing, is we've been looking at all the other services provided by similar cities and saying, you know, how comparable are our fees? We called it analysis, but I guess you could just say kind of check where, where we are in the world of parks or the worlds of rec centers, where are we at? And just ensure that we're, we have a fee that's reasonable and justifiable. But we're open to suggestions.
And the other thing I have is on line 21, you know, in the last, Eric, this probably goes to you. In the last couple of meetings, we've talked about, you know, we paved all these roads. We need to take care of them. So there are still roads out there that need to be paved, and this doesn't talk anywhere about that. This talks about the million dollars which we've done for the last four, or five, or six years to put new pavement over existing gravel. You had talked earlier about we're getting to the point now where we need to additionally, in addition to making sure the roads are paved, we need to go back and repair the ones that, that need damage. Would that fall on this page anywhere, or?
Yes, through the mayor. So what you're touching on is you're kind of seeing a sunset or a shift in the language. So I think this goal predates me, but I believe it was to highlight the initiative by the city council to pave all the roads. There's a deadline. We're going to do it. We're committed to it. This number's old, as we went through with updating that budget to add more money to it. So we may have outlived the million-dollar benchmark. It may make sense this year or whenever to say, we, our goal is to continue to finish paving at a reasonable rate by our deadline. We may not need to call to attention to the million dollars as a hard number anymore. It's just, we're going to see this thing that we started through. What you mentioned was pavement preservation. Everything is wearing out every day. The road that was new five years ago is not new today. There's costs associated with preventing further degradation that then leads to extra costs. If you get to it sooner, it costs less. It's that sort of thing. And so I guess what I'm trying to say is we're getting close to the finish line, and we need to shift to maintaining that. While we will have paved every street in the bur, in the city, we need to fall back. We need to maintain those streets that we got from the state, that sort of thing. So, I mean, this, this is an opportunity to maybe continue the, the goal that we've set out, but not be as specific because it needs the flexibility year in, year out as we meet. We could just leave it. It's, it's reasonable. We could, we could quabble about numbers. I don't think that's necessary. I think it's an aspirational statement that we're going to see that goal through, and we're making good progress on it.
And the way I read this says we will spend a million dollars to pave roads, not to maintain. And there, it says later there, determine the maintenance costs on a five-year basis, which is a great thing. But I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking you, are we committing to paving new roads at the rate of a minimum of $1 million a year?
That's what this says, and I think.
And that's what I'm asking. It said it predates you, so I'm asking if that's correct.
Yeah, and, and I would not be surprised. So I take this as a million or what it takes to finish it. So if I come back with the next two CIPs, and I'm like, we will be done in the next two years, but cost estimates say it's a million and a half, this is a starting point in my mind. That might be time to pull the number out. I don't know.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor? Madam Mayor, I was just going to tag on to what Mr. Graham's saying here, because if we actually look at the 2024 document that's towards the end of this, there was $500,000 for road fixes, kind of like what you're asking. And that's something that, it's funny enough, I wrote it down, and then I remembered that we had, we had talked about it last year. So going forward, we know that we're going to finish paving all these roads. We're going to be able to say, hey, we're, we have every single road in the city of Wasilla paved. But I mean, if I look at Mission Hills, it's bad. Like, it, it really needs a lot of help. I know Nikki knows that as well. And so, I mean, I like the idea, and I, I believe somewhere in the handout we got today, it mentions how we, the, the $500,000 minimum funding to kind of say, hey, we're going to start pocketing $500,000. So as road maintenance comes up, we've got the cash set aside that we can just, great, let's go ahead and determine the cost of the project. I'm kind of curious why that was taken out. Like, wouldn't we want that in this one? Maybe not in 2024, because we're obviously not done paving all the roads.
Right.
But I think going forward, we should be seeing that.
Well, I think, through the mayor, this is, this is the aspirational guidance that leads us into the budget, right? So I know everyone wants to rush into, some people want to rush into the details, let's get the numbers. That will come, but this is getting our hands around what, what the council's goals and initiatives are. So if we say we're getting close to finish paving, you know, we got to fall back on the roads. Putting the numbers in here is a little bit premature, right? Because as Ted will walk us through the budget process, we got to see ins and outs. We got to plan for it. This is, this is the elevator speech for the council to say, we take it serious. We set a goal. We see it through, and we'll, we'll agree on the numbers at a future date.
So is, basically, the reason why that one was taken out was because it's a definitive number in the determine annual maintenance cost and project on a five-year basis? It's essentially your, we're still going to do the maintenance, but we're just take, we're not, we, we don't have a set number for it.
Right, and this isn't the vehicle for that.
Right.
So if the council says, we want all, we want it all paved, we're going to meet the goal. We'll do that through a balanced budget. Does that make sense? We'll get there. We all agree this is what we want, and then we'll get down to those details using this as a guiding principle.
I still like the idea of saying, hey, our goal is to keep X amount of dollars off every single year because we know this is going to continue to come up. So I mean, what that number is subjective, but I, I mean, I like. So I mean, what that number is subjective, but I, I mean, I like seeing that in there because it said, hey, this just says, we're going to work on road maintenance. And all municipalities say they're going to work on road maintenance, but I think for, I mean, also our, our citizens looking at this and going, man, the city of Wausau is actually putting money aside, whether we need, whether we're having pro, maintenance projects that year or not, we're going to have the money because eventually a bigger project's going to come up. So that'd be my.
If you can do that during budget, Ian. Oh, Ted.
I sort of want to jump in. Again, I apologize.
No, you're fine.
And councilman, I, I agree with Councilman Crafton. And one way that you could do this is that this, this is inspirational, but at the same time, you can state to administration and public works that, you know, as a council member, Stu Graham's, Graham stated before, is, hey, in this pot of pie, we want at least a million, a million five, whatever it is, to go towards roads. That can be a directive like the council member was stating is that, as we look at our operating revenues and our operating expenditures, we're going to ensure that at least this segment, as I called the pie, is going to be invested in roads. That is something.
You're good.
That can be stated.
That, that, that's kind of what I'm thinking here, is it basically just, it's setting the standard, kind of like what you're saying, is this is the standard that we, we want and more or less it, it, it doesn't go, it doesn't get forgotten, is kind of where I'm thinking, is that we don't go one year, oh, we didn't put our money aside for, for, for road maintenance.
I will not let you forget.
I mean, I'm not saying you would. It's just, again, like I said, it's, it's setting a standard for, for how we operate.
Okay. And how do you want it stated?
I, I mean, I think, I can't remember where it was at, I'd have to go find it. Where did it go? It's down in the 2024, which is in this.
Nineteen, page nineteen?
No, it's, uh.
Oh, number nineteen.
Seventeen of twenty-two, nineteen on that page.
Yeah, improve and repair existing roads by investing, I mean, I don't, I don't know what dollar amount we'd put on it right now, as a benchmark for annual maintenance. I mean, the $500,000 sounds good to me, that was what I wrote down even on my own paper here, and again, council.
And I, and I would agree with Mr. Crafton here, that, that whole last sentence, I think, could be replaced with what we had last year as item nineteen. And the reason that I think that is, we have no idea what road maintenance is going to cost three years from now. We don't know how much is going to rain, how much is going to snow, if, if we're going to have any washouts anywhere. We don't, we don't have any idea. We can, I'm assuming that you always kind of have in your mind this long-term plan, you know, this road's going to fail in two years, so we need to start thinking about it now so it doesn't become a problem two years from now. So you're already doing that, but what, but what we're looking at here, when we talk about by investing $500,000, that's a starting point for the budget. If you come forward and say, we need, we're going to need $800,000, that does it there. But if we put $500,000 here and then Elena comes in and says, well, that's too damn much money, we need to spend more than $100,000, it's ridiculous, then, you know, this kind of gives us a starting point to, to go forward, not that Elena would do that.
Through the mayor, I agree, that's a good benchmark and I don't have a problem with that. I would speak to kind of your, your idea on roads, for instance. There is a lot of research on how to forecast. And so one of the techniques is to do a, a status inventory. There's technologies that scan and give you health data, basically. And so that's, that's what municipalities are doing, is they're quantifying the state and you forecast out, because it does need to have a, a planning horizon. We do need to say, we grade them, basically, and we say, these are A, B, C, D, E, F's, we've got to get on this. We've got so many F's that we've got a plan ahead for that. So we're not, we're going to start to take the long view, and that's kind of where that five-year plan came in, is just to explain that we don't want to reset the clock every year, we want to have the quantified data in front of us and say, just like with the paving plan, we're going to work through this and we need you as the executive board to understand the state of the infrastructure so we can plan a budget for that. But not like, start over and say, okay, this year, what are we going to do? We're going to know years in advance because of the average life, failure modes, and we see, and there's a, you know, big DOTs have really started that because it's so expensive and they need to plan years in advance with their legislative process, so that's all I'd say.
I, I like how we have this stated here. I mean, again, I think we just need to, do we need to make it a new number or do we want to tag it on to what we already have existing?
Just tag it on.
Continued consensus, you like?
That's good. Okay.
As good as it reads right now?
Yeah.
As it reads right now, it doesn't talk about that five-year plan that Mr. Shaw was talking about. So do, do we need that?
Doing it yearly because it's going in the budget.
It depends on what you want. I, I don't need it to know what I need to do, so I'll be sharing that with you, so.
So if it were passes it reads now, you would not object?
Sorry, madam. I think the five-year becomes irrelevant at this point if we know we're setting a minimum standard of what we put in there. I mean, it's, it's saying that as well, so I think it'd be, sorry.
Okay. To everybody, if you want to speak, raise your hand. Okay. Anything else on seventeen through twenty-two? There are none, we're going now.
I still have a few more on the turn on there. Okay, I had my hand up.
It was here, it was here, it was not here.
Hey, keep your hand up over there with that pencil.
I had my hand up, this, I was trying to find my spot.
Which one?
How high do we want? Going to, so again, we had one in 2024, 1.25 as a benchmark for minimum capital improvements going forward, and it sounds like the reason why we moved it was it doesn't align with current capital funding. Really, the one I want to talk about is the city hall. We all know that this building is getting old. I feel like a new one is something we need to be talking about because it's, it's not like this is going to be a two, three million dollar project. We're, we're potentially talking five, 10, who knows, on this. So is it something that we should be budgeting for and, just like the road maintenance situation? I don't know if Ms. Nygaard or Mr. Eric wants to.
Eric, good job.
I would say that is something that you'd want to call out directly, and if it's, if it falls under a long-term capital infrastructure plan, I, I think it would make sense to talk about that here, to say that city will look at updating its city hall or something like that.
No, build a new one.
Build a new one.
Not nothing. I know where, and it's on a napkin already.
Which bar did she do that in?
My kitchen table.
Okay, so you guys want to do a twenty-three?
Yes.
Yeah. What do we want it to say?
New city hall.
Budget for new city hall, or I mean, do we want to put a dollar amount as to?
Because you don't know.
That's a part of it.
Today it may cost five million, tomorrow it would cost 10.
Sorry.
Well, eighteen, doesn't it say that without putting a number on it? I mean, address the long-term needs of the city's infrastructure. Maybe, maybe we just need to prioritize some of those needs, or not even prioritize, but just identify what we think those long-term, what is it called here, long-term needs for the city's infrastructure are? I mean, such as, you know, replacement of city hall.
Yeah.
You know, airport, whatever. Would that be better or worse?
I'm, so we just add to eighteen, such as city hall, or new city hall.
Such as a new city hall.
A new city hall.
Such as a new city hall.
You're going to have to list it all then, right?
Yeah.
Well, if we want to specify specific projects.
Here's an example.
Could you say such as, comma, ETC? I don't know.
You have to list probably three things before you go with it, et cetera.
I think we should be specific and just add a twenty-three.
Okay.
I think it needs to be twenty-three.
City hall needs to be twenty-three.
Yeah, it's that important, it needs to be there. It's got to be by itself.
Yeah.
Stands alone.
So how would that read? Because we're looking at fiscal years and goals and initiatives for the fiscal year 25, 26. What, what is the goal associated with twenty-three or twenty-six, or whatever it is going to be? What's the goal? To come up with a plan?
I, I would say the goal is to plan for a new city hall. So we're not, we, we have a long road to decide that, right? Location, size, function, all that, and so.
So how about develop planning alternatives for a new city hall? Would that fit what you guys are looking to do?
I'm wondering too.
That's a left hand, he needs to write that down.
Would it, would a good way to develop a reserve plan for a new city hall? So now we're determining, again, we're starting to say, okay, we're thinking it's going to cost X amount of dollars, so we need to start determining what we need to put away so that whatever year we decide to start the project, we'll have most of the money.
Ted?
Well, oh, sorry. Through the mayor to Councilman Crafton. We already have a committed reserve for CIP of approximately $35 million, so I don't know how that would be part of that. So it's really, are you really saying, oh, excuse me, saying that it has to be out of the reserves that we already have, but the council already has committed from last year over 35 million in reserves for CIPs, projects. So I'm not, are you, then, would you be stating that you're planning to build that reserve, you know, by another five or six million, or that's, that's the question of what, you're going to utilize the reserves that you have right now for versus just that one specific project that's?
May I respond?
Yeah.
I, I would want to grow it. I mean, obviously, if it gets to the point where we have to build this, you know, and we obviously have some reserve funds and we could just pull from it, but I, the, the goal would be to save as much as we can until we can get there. So again, grow whatever existing reserve we have, would be what I would think.
Eric?
I would suggest that we talk about the development of the plan, right? So if, if there's comfort in the council, so let the public know that a new city hall is necessary. I would think we'd want to have some verbiage that says, develop a conceptual plan, funding scheme, location for a new city hall. So it's, it's being thought of, talked about, it's not rubber stamped and in the bag and people say, I don't know what you're talking about, you know? So it's got this developmental conceptual plan in it. And then all those details will fall out as it starts to congeal, but it, it hits the record as saying, we're talking about it and we're planning for it. I like that.
Can you give the clerk some suggested verbiage there?
Develop conceptual plan and funding for a new city hall?
Yep, right.
I need sources.
We are moving on.
Wait, I cut my hand though.
We got to say something as well.
No, you know, looking at last year's and this, what I'm going to talk about is a carryover from many years that I've been here, you know, that item fifteen last year says invest one and a quarter million dollars as a benchmark or minimum in city infrastructure projects each fiscal year, you know, funding available. I mean, obviously, that was a very long-term goal, was a very non-specific, but I would like to add an item twenty, whatever, twenty-four in there that says, invest 1.25 million as a benchmark or minimum in city-funded infrastructure improvements. I would like to add that, bring that back in, where we're talking about, we're going to spend a minimum of one and a quarter million on city-funded, a project, that's going to be part of our budget. Now, whether that's used as a match or whether that's used as standalone, that can be determined later, but I, but I think we need to continue to say that we are going to fund infrastructure projects out of our pocket.
So this is what I had, I kind of tailed into my city hall budgeting one. It sounds like we have quite a few set aside already. We have a pretty large reserve account for capital expenditures already, projects.
Ted?
Raise your hand, Ted.
You can just hold that in close and just leave it on, Ted.
I'm afraid I'd get my hand slapped if I raised my hand. No, just kidding. That is actually part of the stabilization policy that the council set, that any funds that are over our fund stabilization policy of seven and a half months, we have a minimum of six months to seven and a half months that we have to keep in unreserved at any point in time, in essence, at year end. You're approving that any excess monies that we have in our last year's income statement, in essence, goes to that capital reserves. So we're building that capital reserves, the committed amount to capital reserves based on either revenues are higher than we projected or expenses are lower than we projected. So that's how that reserve or committed amount is built. And it's gone up from, I believe, 31 million and 21 to 35 million and 22 when you see our next, when we issue our financials for FY22, that'll be next week. And that's just due to, for example, what happened with ARPA and everything, where we were able to take and fund our police, a lot of our police salaries through the federal funds, which actually gave us more reserves for CIP, in essence, due to that. But I think I'm losing where I'm coming from. But anyway.
So are you saying we don't have to have it as a goal because it's already built into our fiscal?
No, I, I was going to agree with Councilmember Graham is that I do believe, again, like I said before, is that 1.25 million or an amount, that's a priority for the council as we build our budget. Again, that's stating that you're taking a portion that wouldn't go towards operating expenditures, that we're saying that we're going to try because obviously you'll come back with the budget. That our goal is that we want around two to three million at least in capital projects between roads and other funded city projects. And that's not unreasonable with the funding that I see that we have.
Eric?
One clarification to your question, Mr. Crafton, is that 35 million as the example is not allocated. So you're asking about current CIPs, that's outside of it, that's unallocated, open for allocation by the council into new CIPs or private cities.
It's committed.
It's committed as a CIP, but it's not allocated to any projects.
I just want to add then, I, I'm, I like what Mr. Graham's adding there. I agree with it.
Stu?
I agree with myself.
You keep your hand in your lap. Okay. We are on to twenty, where are we on to now?
Twenty-three. Twenty-seven. Well, on the old.
Okay, fine.
Now 25.
Just focus on that.
Okay. All right. I'm going to what numbers I got on the page, which is 23 through 27. The goal is to develop stable and equitable revenue sources to accomplish our mission statement. Okay, anybody got anything on this? Stu?
So Madam Mayor, I really like number 25 there because I'm a big believer in volunteers, having been a community volunteer for many, many years. But that's really not our strong point. I mean, we have trouble filling boards and commissions. We have trouble getting people to come to one, more than one committee meeting, you know. So if we establish a committee to talk about things, we need them here for every Tuesday for a month. We have problems with that. I don't know that that's really an achievable goal without some specifics there to go with it. And one of the things, obviously, that folks have been talking about for the last five or six council meetings is the library and the library committee and, you know, how people want to participate, but they're told they can't participate. And yet, and then over here, and that's their perception is they can't participate. Then over here, we're saying, you know, develop a robust volunteer program. I think that's a great thing. And I know on nonprofits that I serve on boards for, that's one of the criteria for the executive director is to, you know, foster and enhance the volunteer base. But whose responsibility is this? Is this yours? Is this the deputy?
When you look up at the chart, number 25, there's an X in every one of these little boxes. So it's everybody's responsibility. And I will give a shout out to the chief. He has already started his volunteer program.
Which volunteer program is that?
To the council, we have started the Explorer Program, which volunteers are timed. And then I'm in the process of the final improvements here soon for the reserve program to bring on.
Which are programs that we've been talking about for six or eight years?
No, it was a big issue with that.
So I know we've got, I mean, we've got, and don't get me wrong, I applaud you for doing that. I think those are both great, great programs and both need to be developed. But Eric, what volunteer programs are we going to have from you? Ted, what volunteer programs are we going to have from finance? I mean, I don't, I don't see it lining up here.
Stu, instead of coming?
Yeah, so I think you bring up a great point. And to the chief's point, when we have this goal and we can't meet it, we should have the confidence to come back and say, I want to meet this goal. I need some support. Chief did chop with the cop. I mean, if we support that as a community and directors come back and say, I can't support that without this, there's a great word in here, initiative, I need support on this initiative. If I'm going to have, what the mayor's discussing is the.
Interns.
Yeah, they're with Job Corps. So having Job Corps come over and work for us, right? I'm going to need time and materials and I'm going to need my staff to have the time to shadow them, show them around. There's time and investment that's necessary, that. And so if we don't feel like we have the support of the council to do those extra community-related things, we're not going to be able to. And so having this dialogue is very helpful. So I'll know I can come back and say, you know, if this is supported. I have material needs, I have time needs. Do you want to hear what we're doing? You know what I mean? I think of like Scott's mayor's picnic, all of those community needs, our parade. Are we making it a priority? Can we throw time, resources, people at it with support as opposed to being told, you know, no overtime for that project, if that makes sense? So it's that real give and take to have robust activities within each department that while they seem a little outside of water and sewer, they actually meet this goal. But they do take time on my part, time on my staff's part, materials, that sort of thing. So I plan to have Job Corps come because they had been here. We hire out of that. It's useful. But, you know, it is also, takes focus, so.
But what I'm seeing here, and I'd rather see it say, enhance a robust volunteer program. Because what I'm seeing here is we're directing finance to develop a volunteer program. We're, we're directing the clerk's office to develop a volunteer program. I would rather see it changed to enhance, which obviously means that we would support it, you know, as opposed to saying, you, all of you nine people up top, need to develop a volunteer program.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, I like that.
Madam Mayor? Yes, but does support enhance makes it sound like it's already there?
Already there.
And I don't know if we already have it. We don't. So we would need to develop it before we could enhance it.
Crystal?
Through the mayor to Mr. Graham. So the tech hub is also a volunteer program because it's the high school, it's the Kinnick Tribe, it's MTA, and it's the city of Wasilla being the conduit for the community to come out and understand what that new economy looks like. And so it does, like Eric says, it does divert us from the day-to-day job description, but it's also driving something in the community that can be very valuable. We see that also with the homeless. When they have different conversations around homeless, they'll call us for additional verification, this is what you guys are seeing or not, or do you have these people to participate in the conversation? So maybe just some little word changes, I think, would be good.
So based on that, I would say that we would strike the develop a robust and replace it with the words enhance and expand volunteer programs. So we're not directing people to develop programs, but we're going to support them. And if they can find a way to develop programs, we're going to support them as well. But I don't know what.
Consensus? Okay. Anything else on 23 through 27? Okay. Here are none. We're going on to goal. 28 through 31 is effectively operating and developing city enterprise funds.
Madam Mayor? Could we just confirm that we've got this documented right before we move on?
So we were striking develop a robust.
Okay, so enhance and support a robust?
Enhance and expand.
Enhance and expand volunteer. There's no robust.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not a robust guy. I'm a roten the kind of guy.
Okay, anything on 28 through 31?
Madam Mayor?
Yeah?
I'll have to back up to item 27. The last phrase there, identify opportunities for generating additional revenue streams. Well, the number one revenue stream in many cities is property tax. And we have said we're not going to do that. So to me, this, perhaps explore additional revenue streams as opposed to generate, you know, for instance, strike contractual agreements to explore additional revenue streams as opposed to identify opportunities to generate. I mean, to me, it just looks like we're looking for a way to tax people or we're looking for a way to get more money out of people when in fact, we may just be equalizing the cost of water and sewer operations with the cost of water and sewer revenues. You know, I mean, that's, I don't know. I just, I just look at that and I see that kind of stands almost in stark opposition to what we already said, which was we will not explore property taxes revenue stream. Or we will not accept property taxes revenue stream.
Okay. Mr. Graham stated how you want it written.
So I would strike, identify opportunities for generating and replace with explore. So it will be contractual agreements to explore additional revenue streams.
Okay, all in favor?
And then to include or just including? Including, yeah, to include or including.
Whatever the, whatever the scribners need is there to correct tenses, fine with me.
Yeah, just, just to include. I'm with that. I'd agree to that one.
Okay. All right, we're moving on. 28 through 31, effectively operating and developing city enterprise funds.
Is the airport an enterprise fund?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor? 29. This is going to go back to something that you and Ms. Rubio had talked about a while ago. Changes to the Menard Center about the ice rink. I know this might fall under capital, capital expenditures. It just sparked my thoughts whenever I came across here. What, what are we thinking already? It's not about exploring options here and attracting additional revenue source. Does it increase the ratio of revenue to cost? Have we explored options like that, like discussed previously? Moving the ice rinks outside, turning that into a basketball court type stuff?
Through the mayor to Councilmember Crafton. We have thought about it from every direction, from small, big, to convert to new. We don't have a complete plan and a picture for that. Our discussion has been that the facility is stuck in the middle. We were designed as a sports facility, but to generate revenue, we started adding events. But we then start interrupting sports or events. The events are using sport-like facilities. So we're kind of stuck in this, how do we go forward? So we've talked about, is it an expansion of the building? Is it converting the turf to a court? Is it doing outdoor amenities, like an outdoor rink? We started with the foundation of a parking lot to accommodate where we were at and hopefully built in enough growth for what, the things that we want to do. Where it falls in the mayor's and the council's kind of priority, that's kind of where we're, I think, developing a plan a little bit. And our intent is to hopefully present some ideas as we go through the budget process.
That sounds good to me right now. At the idea generating phase right now.
And we, you know, this last year, you know, we exceeded our budget. So that's short of a million dollars in revenue. So we've been doing a great job. I think we were $127,000 over the revenue budget last year. So we're pushing, but how do we get unstuck? And as our conversation has been, sorry to continue your question. How do we set Wasilla apart the next 20, 30 years? Because we did it 20 years ago by doing, building the facility. So how do we look to the future and be what the city wants?
Can I add one more thing to that real quick before I, curious to hear what Eric says? Just something to throw into the pool of idea generation is, I mean, some people have heard me talk about it before. It's an indoor park. Anchorage did it. Basically, think Wonderland or the park right outside Menard and have a small indoor one because, I mean, they're not really usable in the winter time. So just throw it in the pool of thought.
Absolutely. Tell them this.
Eric?
I want to piggyback on what Scott was saying. The net income, Scott has done a fantastic job of working with those events and saying, you need to be profitable. You're going to put this energy in. We're not giving it away. I want you to succeed. You need structure. You need to figure out how to make this event work. Because it's very costly to take down a sports event to set up a different event. And so he's done a fantastic job of saying, we want you here, but you got to, you got to bring your A game. And so what you've seen is, with his revenue increases, is to say, we have expectations. And so I kind of think of it back to the initiative to build volunteers. Scott is really building a depth in all of the event planners that use our facility to say, you get in, you get out, you be successful. I want you to be successful, but you don't get a week to set up. You need to get the team, the crew, the plan to get in and get out because I got to fill this place. And so if you think of value within the community, there have been a lot of volunteer groups, a lot of nonprofits that have really matured under Scott's direction on how to run events. And I think it's great momentum. And as he's got a wealth of knowledge of where we could go, I think he's right on the point to say, this is groundbreaking 20 years ago, but we can't rest on our laurels. What do we do next? I really like your indoor park. Mayor and I are talking about parks today. They're not operable in the worst weather. And so there's value in talking about internal, indoor recreation, outdoor recreation, and how do we balance that? So anyway, I just wanted to commend Scott on what he's been doing. I don't know if you've noticed the numbers, but it really has made a difference for Wasilla as a destination for events.
Ted told me that we had a Phase Two to the Menard Center. I didn't know that.
I didn't know that either.
Yeah. And Eric found the, or Scott, Scott found the drawings and stuff for Phase Two. I have it in my office, so, anyway. So it's, it's always planned to be bigger than what it is now. Okay, anything else from 28 to 31?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
So item 31, on the last sentence there, the word fair, nothing's fair, you know. Just doesn't work that way. But I think we could change that to equitable. And I think that would more reflect the current thinking in the community nowadays. Is this, if it's equitable, that means that both sides buy into it. It may not be, you know, I mean, what's fair? That I get it all and you get none. But equitable means that we both get something out of it. I'd like to see us change the word fair to equitable.
Okay. Consensus? All right, moving on. We have got 31 minutes left. Wasilla Budget Goals and Initiatives, Ensuring Community Safety, 32 through 40. Anybody got anything?
I'd like a couple of minutes to continue to look at it before we move on.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Number 40, Develop Speed Moderation Programs in Support to Community Demand. I mean, this might fall under roads at that point because, again, some of that might include putting in speed bumps when we're looking at, especially redoing a lot of roads at that point. I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the conversation. And then also, there was one, I think that's under 2024 is where it talks about the, like the, not the speed trap, the electronic speed monitoring at the school zones. Trying to find it.
Signs, signs that say, speed limit's 25 and you're going 31.
It's 36 in the 24 goals.
Correct, okay. So is that plan, that, is there a reason why it's not on here? Is because that plan is to get that done in 2024 basically?
Through the mayor. Technically, yes, the signs exist and they kind of fall within each other, right? So we're working closely with PD to identify their crash data, working with Sergeant, or Lieutenant Lopez about, you know, what they're seeing on the streets and stuff. So there's this, I think it falls. So there's this, I think it falls well under this goal because we work with PD to see where these issues are. And then there may be physical speed bumps, there may be speed signs. But it's a team effort to identify, you know, how we moderate speed. There can be design constraints. So if we think about like the couplet design, if you have the road designed a certain way, it will slow traffic down. There's kind of a psychology side of it. There's a structure side of it. There's an enforcement side of it. If we have a fully staffed PD that's doing traffic, there's traffic stops and people just know. And so there's this kind of spectrum, if you will, that I think was better encompassed with, we felt was better encompassed with the language today versus those two independent specific examples.
So are you saying we did not meet thirty-six or we don't plan to meet thirty-six from last?
My understanding is through the mayor that we do and we continue to plan. It just didn't need to be so specific because that, in that example, with the speed signs, they exist. And what I understand now is Matu School is moving, so.
But it's still there.
Signs there.
Well, there's one sign there well away from the school and then the other way there's not. And we've redesigned a road that funnels people right the other way past that school, so.
So we'll address that.
Anything else?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Graham.
Thirty-seven. Retain public safety employees by offering compensation packages that align with neighborhood communities, encourage progression and implement innovative strategies. That, correct me if I'm wrong, Deputy Administrator, but we're saying there's more to it than the neighboring communities. I mean, it, uh, I mean, we can't just be better than Palmer and we can't be better than Anchorage. We have to be more innovative and make ourselves more attractive. And it's not purely a compensation issue. Perhaps you and the chief could talk to that. I know we pay less than Anchorage, we pay more than Palmer. You can get promoted faster in Palmer than you can in Wasilla and you can get, you know, get. I mean, there's all sorts of balance there and I know that you and I have talked about this, Crystal. But I'm just, I'm wary of saying that we're going to align with neighboring communities, that that's going to be part of our consideration is are we in alignment with neighboring communities? Well, maybe the neighboring communities haven't got the right idea. Maybe you two can.
To the council, you know, it's kind of a loaded question because there's a lot of factors that, that kind of decides on a lot of things, you know. A lot of agencies in the lower forty-eight are throwing signing bonuses up to sixty thousand dollars and they're still having hiring problems. When, you know, when I come on here last year, we were, we were five short. Part of the CBA negotiations was hiring bonuses and I didn't think that that was the answer. You know, the, the research that I've done on this is that growth and opportunity and being recognized for their training and experiences were the one, two for what it was. You know, you have a lot of experienced officers out of the five that I hired, or excuse me, out of the six that I hired. At the time, I hired five laterals and one brand-new person. You know, and they come from neighboring agencies. In the years of, that I can remember, there was AST that had applied, there's APD that had applied. You know, money is going to be a factor in that and we need to be competitive. Will we ever be Anchorage PD or, you know, or AST? We won't. It's just the nature of the size of the department until we grow that big. However, what we can do is a little small things, a change in the culture. Having the medical is a huge benefit, having the gear, the training, having the backup, having a lot of sort of other internal development that they get to see that and be recognized for their training experience plays into the factor in how we recruit and how we retain people. So to, to say that we need to be, have compensation packages, we do. We, we need to be competitive. We are not, we are not Palmer. We average anywhere between four hundred and fifty to six hundred, five hundred and fifty, six hundred calls a week. We are busy for, for any time of being given, three people working on that shift. But we're also not to the level where we're not also down twenty, thirty, forty people like AST is and they're running all the call-to-call and we're waiting for, you know, two hours before they got a response. So we, we are fortunate enough that our response times are right where they need to be. And a lot of that has the ability of time and work balance. That officers are able to still work, still have overtime opportunities, still have growth, but also still have the ability to spend time at home in families and have a life. So to put in there that it's just a strictly compensation package. You know, it is and we are competing with the neighbors because it is, you know, I was, I was full for half a second. I'm down two. But I also, for the first time in a long time, that I've had eleven applicants and probably about five or six of those are laterals that I'm looking to be pretty forward to be hiring some out of there. So, uh, they are, they are coming from neighboring agencies that are.
So my concern was here that says that align with neighborhood communities. Would, it would be better to say that are competitive as opposed to align with, would that?
Competitive would be good because it is a competition. It's, we're trying to get the best applicants for, for what we want. You know, and we are in competing with APD. We are competing with Palmer and AST and Zuerd, Homer, I mean, any department that's in the state. Air Banks. Air Banks, I think, is throwing out sixty thousand right now and they're still having hiring problems.
They're losing.
Okay. Anything else on thirty-two through forty?
So we're going to delete the word align and add are competitive?
Or do you want to delete align with neighboring communities and simply say are competitive? Retain public safety employees by offering, by offering compensation packages that are competitive.
Delete all the way up through the word communities?
And remove that A. This plural, packages.
Staff, any issue with that?
I like it.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
That's how you wanted it, right? I'm just making sure I see this correctly.
Wash my trifocals off here. Yes, that works great.
Okay. All right, we're moving on to forty-one through forty-nine. Preserving Quality of Life for Current and Future Residents and for visitors to our community.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'm going to jump down to forty-nine there. Eric, Restrooms at Bumpus. We've had that come up a couple of times now. Is that something we could just add on to that and say, hey, can we start looking at the scope of this project as well?
Absolutely.
So we're just going to add Bumpus ball fields in there?
So you can add Bumpus.
You can park in Bumpus ball fields.
Agreed.
Okay, anything else?
That meat. Strike the S.
Yeah, scribner, if you can do it.
I'll do it.
Okay, Mr. Graham.
So once again, looking back at the previous year's goals and initiatives. Last year was item forty-five. Establish a weed control program with a goal of eradicating roadside invasive weeds in five years. That seems to have fallen off. I understand the five-year part not being some of it, but instead of establishing, I mean, we've, we've already established a program. Some years it gets done, some years it doesn't just because of those damn weeds are right there at the very end of the fiscal year and you either have money to go mow or you don't have money to go mow the weeds down. And that's the only way to get, most of those is to mow them down before the spores do whatever it is that they do. I still think, you know, this soap weed and the purple vetch has gotten even worse and worse and worse over the years. And if, I, I disagree with doing away with a weed control program, an invasive weed control program as a goal. I'd like to see us continue that. Of course, you know, how that happens, that's up to you guys. But the council, you know, I'm sure will come to you and say, you know, have you looked between, you know, the railroad and what's the name of that clothing store over there? You can't even walk over there, the purple vetch is so bad, you know. And yeah, part of that's railroad land, part of it's private land, part of it's our land. But, but, you know, invasive weeds, it's, it's a state priority and ought to be a priority for us as well. So I would, I would like to take what was item forty-five in the two thousand twenty-four goals and move that on to this. Move that on to this year with just striking the last word that says in five years. So establish invasive weed control program with a goal of eradicating roadside invasive weeds.
Okay, Eric.
I'd like to speak against that proposal. And my point is that the areas that you identified are wholly outside of our control.
Well, that area, I can, I can put you on, on Palmer Wasilla Highway in city land and put, show you soap weed that's six or seven feet tall.
I understand. I'm just saying that it, it's like a, it's a Department of Agriculture. It's, it's not a role that the city plays, both with the function and the review. The invasive weeds are, invasive animals, invasive weeds are an issue. But it's multi-jurisdictional, it's not, I just don't see it as the city's purview. I asked to have it removed because I don't see a functional way to ever meet that goal. If we wanted to carry it through as a request with multi-jurisdictional partners, I think that's fine. But if we, let's look at Lake Lucille weeds. That is completely within our control. We have a boat, we go out and do that. It's a never-ending battle. Roadside, right-of-way, private property, those are just, I just don't see us being the entity that has any management authority over that, so.
Well, what you're saying is if the state doesn't maintain its vegetative screens that it put up like over by Lowe's and things like that, then we just say, well, that's not our problem? That's not the right answer. The right answer is that there's a problem out there and we go handle it.
Right, so we go advocate. We go to the, the state and we say, what are you going to do about this? But as you know, we have lots of priorities.
In case of the invasive weeds, we've only got a couple of weeks to do that. It's hard to get an appointment without a DOT within two weeks, much less get any action.
I just look for goals that I know I can make progress on and I just don't feel that we have the ability to address that.
I disagree, but that's just me.
Okay, the consensus.
Ian.
I've got a question more so. I mean, would, maybe something just saying, hey, we're going to make, in some fashion, are making progress or we're going to have a plan that we implement that to address the problem? Obviously, maybe eradicating, yeah, eradicating, it, it sounds like it's just not possible. I mean, I kind of understand that and how dandelions are, they crop up every year, you know, in my, in my backyard. But I, it is, without just blowing a bunch of money, because again, I understand there's a balance of like, hey, let's spend some money to, it's beautifying the city of Wasilla. Kind of like the, the gates are those fence, those white fences where they're rusted. Obviously, it sounds like they were ours because they've disappeared this past year after they got mentioned at the budget time break. And that's where I would think of it. At least if, if the city says, hey, we have a point of action and we're going to do what we can. We're going to spend X amount of dollars on this every year to at least try and tackle the problem. I understand it, eradicating might not be possible. That's what I would think.
Yeah, so I think, let's talk about another broader problem. Bart beetles, for instance, right?
That's going to be my next thing.
Yeah, so it's important, they need to be dealt with. You could look at the Department of Forestry. That's very important to them too. What do they have for programs? What do they have for working with private landowners, state, mental health trust lands, all of those? It's very important, but they go out and they say, could you consider this program? Are you willing to go and follow these guidelines? That's something that already exists. The Department of Agriculture wants to eradicate invasive weeds. But they're not coming along the DOT right-of-way in the spring. They can give you guidance. And so the amount of control that we have is very limited. If we wanted to join a consortium that is involved valleywide, we could do that. But we're not going to be, the, we're not the ground zero for these invasive weeds. And so for us to stand up our own program is, I just don't see it as feasibly having the outcome that we can measure.
Crystal.
Yeah, through the mayor. So resources are limited. We don't want to expand government. We want to stay within our lane. So like you said, you have a limited amount of resources. This goal is to enhance the quality of life, preserve the quality of life. We felt that replacing it with some lighting during the winter, during the holiday season, enhancing safety and creating a festive atmosphere would be more of a contribution to enhancing the quality of life instead of eradicating weeds. That would cause us to divert some of our resources into a problem that doesn't really meet that goal, the overall goal.
Mr. Graham.
So we're not diverting resources because we're already spending resources. The council has decided year after year to allocate resources for this invasive weed eradication, particularly the soap weed, and it's done by mowing. I have advocated for a couple of years now that instead of the city doing it, that we just have contractors that say, we will go out and do it and we identify areas. You've got three or four contractors out there saying, if you can get this done in the next five days, go do it. Because that's pretty much, you've got two weeks to cut that soap weed down. Otherwise, those spores will germinate and come back. Even if you cut it down, you know, about a third of it is going to come back in two years. But if you keep, if you stay with the program and you keep cutting it down, and the reason I can talk about this, I mean, I've been talking about this since Vic Coring was in state government, you know, and was on the Transportation Committee for the House, you know. But you let it go and it's, it's just going to continue to be gone. So we're not diverting any resources. We're just continuing to dedicate resources by, these programs that you're talking about are diverting resources from the invasive weed management to lighting, which is a great thing. I advocated for that, you know, and we'll still advocate for that. But I don't think we're diverting any resources. I think we're just deciding that unfortunately, Eric is exactly correct. There is no way to eradicate these weeds, but we can try and control them. And if you think we don't have, you know, folks who have significant adverse reactions to the spores from soap weed, I would suggest that you talk with the hospital and they would, they would disagree with you because it is, you know, in some cases, it's a life-threatening situation. But, and I think in the past, the most we've ever spent on it was fifty thousand dollars and that was five or six years ago. You know, when we actually went out and aggressively tried to knock some of this stuff down because it was all over the town. Now there's a fairly limited number of spaces and the spaces that were there this year, if they were mowed this year, won't be back next year. We'll need to look at it in two years. So it's, it's an ongoing thing and it's, it's not a huge, not a huge number. We're not talking about millions of dollars. We're even, not even talking about fifty thousand dollars. I think a few years ago, we spent twenty-five thousand dollars.
I think it gets bigger each year because it, it becomes more.
It, it can.
A program of dollars.
It, it can get bigger each year just because of inflation and it can get bigger. It's just like snow plowing. If it's a bad weed year, we spend more money on weeds. If it's a, if it's not a bad weed year, we don't spend that much money on weeds. But I, I would like to see that kept because I think it's important for the, for the, you know, visual appeal of the city, for the health of the city residents. And even though sometimes we're going to be stepping on DOT's toes by operating in their right-of-way, you know, it's something that they're not going to do. We can, we can continue to work with them and lobby with them year after year after year. But we know that DOT is giving us responsibility, not taking responsibility from us, so, which is unfortunate. But I, so I would like to see, you know, what was item forty-five moved into a new item on whatever this is, preserving quality of life.
Ian.
Just to add to that, going back to one of our other ones, we were discussing like volunteer programs, initiatives, trying to get more community involvement. I mean, and I don't want to say we've spent a bunch of money on this, but again, if we're looking at trying to get more community involvement, what if that was part of this program? Is it saying, hey, Wasilla citizens as well as borough? Like the city of Wasilla is on a pathway or on a track to trying to eradicate weeds and minimize the weeds in our community, but we need help. Like, you know, obviously if my neighbor doesn't cut down all their dandelions, but I do, pain because all of their dandelions are coming into my yard. So it, again, that's, that's part of the issue we run into is if we're the only ones doing it, like you said, we're not, we're not grounded. it, like you said, we're not, we're not ground zero for this. If we're the only ones doing it, obviously, it's a losing battle and it's one of those things, we'll never eradicate them. But maybe that's what needs to be built into here is a community-wide initiative to say, hey, we're on track to remove these. How would you feel about something like that, Mr. Graham? Built into this?
That'd be fine, but I'd just hate to see us lose the initiative that we've had over the last eight or so years of fighting weeds by pulling up completely. I think it's just going to come back and four years from now, we're going to be going, where the hell did all these weeds come from? Unfortunately, it won't be us, it'll be some other council.
Okay.
It's one of those things, we don't pay attention to it, sooner or later, we will have to pay attention to it.
Consensus of the council.
I say yes.
Elena.
Hi, Woody, this is Tim. I agree with you. Some initiatives that doesn't mean that we have to do a whole big project on it, but at least keep it in front of us.
Elena. I guess I'd side with Eric. I think that we can actually control that to that extent. There's too many what-if factors in there. And really, if it did come down to where we needed to throw some money at it, I'm pretty sure we could, given the opportunity. I don't think it needs to be built in there. It's not like sweeping the roads. Yeah.
I agree with Eric too. I think, you know, if we have control of what we have control of, it's not going to do much good. Yes, we'd have to mow for DOT, mow for the borough, mow for, and like Eric said, we're not ground zero for that. And like Ian said, I totally agree. Yeah, we keep our dandelions down, but all around us is dandelions and it doesn't do any good. So I don't see a lot of benefit for having that as a goal.
Mr. Johnson, why do you have that opinion?
Well, I think if we keep it in front of us, we realize that there is work done, that does not necessarily mean that we're going to be actively pursuing it, but we're telling people the values that we have as a city.
So I guess because these are, I mean, this is just me, I probably, it looks like you have, based on the majority here, you have support for leaving it in. These are going to come back, first meeting in January or in January final, for final approval. So I suppose the people that are opposed at that point in time, you could always move to strike it. But really, the intent is not to come back in January and completely flush everything else.
That's just my suggestion.
I just want to add, it sounds like Mr. Vlock, Mr. Vio, are saying, you just don't want to be expending a lot of additional resources to this, but are you on board with the fact that we just want to minimize what weeds are out there? Is that what I understand from both of you?
No, I don't think, unless it's a problem on the table, I don't think that we need to do anything about it.
And maybe I'm not seeing the big picture, you know, Stu says it's, you know, we've been looking at it for eight years. I, I just don't see where it would do much good, I guess, is what I'm seeing. I'm not saying it's not important. Then I look at it, I thought those little purple flowers were flowers. I thought that's natural vegetation in Alaska. I didn't think it was ugly or, anyway, but, so that's what, I don't, I just don't know how beneficial it would be to have it in here, that's, and to try to do something about it. I kind of like your volunteer program, you know, if it's important, form a committee to people who, you know, it's really important to, maybe something like that.
Okay, general consensus.
I think it was three to two to move it forward. It was during the budget, that's the clerk.
Okay.
For adoption.
Right.
You know, they could do like I do. I went to Home Depot and bought this weed killer straight.
Everyone just did their own. I do my own.
I do.
And that's partly where I was trying to get at, is if we had, I mean, I wouldn't say we could form a committee, but just create some type of like, like, I'm trying to think of the word.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
Just remind the body, as it reads now, it's directing staff to establish an invasive weed control program with the goal of eradicating roadside invasive weeds.
Should we change it to continue or support?
Strike it right now, actually, or just do it in January, it's fine.
Yeah, establish is a bad thing because it should already be there, but apparently it's not, so, but, but, you know, maybe work invasive weed, but it doesn't matter, everybody's already weighed in, so I'd like to weigh in on something else, if I may, Madam Mayor.
Sure.
So we're on a goal of preserving the quality of life for current future residents and for visitors to our community. The number one threat to our community is identified by FEMA is wildfire because of the amount of spruce beetle killed trees. What are they called, beetle burg?
Spruce beetle.
Whatever they are. Because of the amount of trees that we have. So for us to not address that here, I think is ignoring, you know, I don't know how much money we spent on that, I don't know how much money the federal government spent on putting that study together, but I mean, we took an hour and a half or two hours of council time talking about that report. So we need to put something in here regarding with, you know, develop a plan to eliminate spruce bark beetle killed trees within the city. First step of that is get rid of it on city land, second step of that is to work with residents to get rid of it on their private land. I don't know exactly what we want to say there, but I would say, you know, develop a plan to eliminate spruce bark beetle killed trees within the city.
Madam Mayor.
I would say probably maybe minimize, just because again, it's, it'd be really difficult to eliminate it, kind of like the weed situation. I mean, think about how many vacant properties are there that we're not able to, we're not going to be able to get the homeowners to get to. So I would say minimize.
I like that.
The amount of spruce, or spruce beetle killed trees, I don't, if that's the technical term for them.
Spruce bark beetle.
Yes. Because that is, I know the, I would say the borough worked on it, we talked to somebody at AML about it, who was that, Nanana?
You know?
Yeah, they, they, they had, they were, they were working on it as well. And Eric had mentioned it as well, and I wanted to say something as well. I think that's a very, very good idea.
Crystal.
Through the mayor, to Mr. Graham, so you're referencing the hazardous mitigation plan?
Yes.
So we could put that in here because it is a funding mechanism too, to focus on initiatives and hazardous mitigation plans specific to spruce bark beetle and fire mitigation, something like that. Because it will, it will, it potentially could pull funding in with it, and it's already been approved by FEMA, and so it's a recognized priority that we have. So we could just reference that plan.
Could you provide some suggested verbiage for that, please?
So we could focus on initiatives in 2023 hazardous mitigation plan, specific to spruce bark beetle killed trees for fire mitigation. Would that be what you're thinking?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Much more eloquent. That's your way of telling me to keep my mouth shut and just ask you what to say?
Okay, it is 8:01. So we have still got, have we only got two more? What's all we have?
That's not yours.
Oh, well, we're in luck. Okay, we just done 41 through 49? Okay. We are on to promote responsible development, 50 and 51.
Could we, on item 50 there?
Raise your hand, please.
Don't shoot. So on item 50 there, it's kind of jumbled, the verbiage continued, expanding the infrastructure supporting the train station stop in coordination with the partners. Is there supposed to be a comma there or something when it talks about the Main Street couplet project? And then again, you're going back to the intermodal facility at the new depot site. I just don't see it being very clear what we're trying to do. We've got two different projects there. One of them involving the railroad, but I mean, their end of things has already been solved when it comes to the Main Street couplet, so they're really not a partner in that other than the railroad crossing there, but you know, whatever we do there, we're going to pay for it in eternity, so. But, but I don't know, is there a way to rephrase that that says a little bit more precisely what it is that we're trying to do? Or maybe you could explain to me what we're precisely trying to do?
I'm going to refer to the doctor.
Through the mayor. Yeah, I think, I think you're right, Mr. Graham. I think we can pull up the second reference to intermodal site and just make it more clear about the train station that we're talking about. I think there was a connection with bringing people off of, right? So our intention was also to touch on the fact that we want to bring visitors off the train into the couplet, into downtown. And so there's this connection that we wanted to make in writing, but I think that we can do more to smith that a little bit here.
I would like to see that it doesn't need to happen tonight, but I would like to see that a little more clear, you know, if we're talking about transitioning folks from the train stop to downtown, you know, maybe we need to talk about that separately. The railroad's certainly not going to help us with that, that's certainly going to be a city initiative.
No, they're a partner in that.
Well, they'll help us get off the train, but.
Yeah, and even support, you know, the trolley idea.
Right.
Yeah, so.
Which would be our initiative and not theirs, so.
Well, with their partnership, I mean, they already know the, the bus side of stuff, so there's a lot of, you know, discussion about that. It's not black and white handoff, so.
Yeah, because if you could touch that up.
Do that now or?
Maybe in coordination with the city administrator, I'd be happy with that, so.
I mean, I'd like to see that on here, I think, I'd like to see that on here. I think that's actually a really good idea as well, because again, it's, this is, it's the, this is our foundational piece for us, saying this is what we're, we're looking at doing for, and this is what's important to us, so I'd see that. And I have something else I wanted to add once we're done talking about this topic.
Okay, Mr. Graham.
Again, Madam Mayor, nowhere today did we talk about the discussion that we've had over, I believe it was Title 14 or was it Title 16, the rewrite? This might be the right place to put that, to ensure that a rewrite of Title 16 is completed. Even, even though this is a budget goal, you know, there's going to be a consultant involved in that and there's going to be, need to be money provided for that consultant to, to help plan and put that together.
Do you want to just give direction to administration to include that in their budget? It's a one-shot, you're going to have it done.
Or we added it as number 56.
I don't know, do we, that's what I'm asking, do we need to add it? But I mean, since we've had so much discussion already on it, it seems like it is a goal and, you know, making sure that funding is available for that goal, I think should be an initiative or budget goal initiative, so.
Ian.
I want to say, again, I think you're right in clarifying, we want to rewrite Title 16 or finish it, the process has more or less already been started. I want to say it's somewhere else in here where we discuss kind of rewriting code. I was trying to find it, but I mean, looked at this so many times now at this point, I couldn't, I couldn't tell you specifically, but maybe that's just what we, at this point, is just specify we want the Title 16 rewrite.
Okay, Crystal.
Through the mayor, so Title 16 would be part of that updating the comp plan. This comp plan would be, or all, it's, it's, it's time to have that rewrite done, but I think that because it's such an important part of the growth that we're seeing for the city, I think it would be good to have an independent initiative for that, a rewrite of Title 16 to promote responsible development.
Okay.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Do your hand higher.
Eric, you could tag in on this one here, and maybe again, it might be somewhere else in here, is reviewing traffic concerns as we've seen, because Eric and I had a discussion here a couple of weeks ago, just using them as an example, the Palmer-Wassilla intersection with the parks, highway there, like there's an extra, there's room for an extra lane, redoing the intersection coming in down, or advocating, I guess, for DOT to work on that for us. And I'm trying to think of how we could put this in here, but something to analyze where we're having serious traffic problems and places that we could, or either we, or we could encourage the state to look at and address for us. See where I'm getting at, Eric? What do you think about that?
Yeah, so through the mayor, there were a couple of points in here that I would point to, I'm trying to find one, but one I think would, might be number four back at the beginning. The city will foster engagement and collaboration with local policy leaders to develop initiatives and funding options for large capital community projects with mutual or overlapping interests. And I would point to the MPO, and I would, I would leverage our newfound power and seat at the table to say, this is a huge mutually overlapping interest in our infrastructure, and you really need to listen to us on traffic. We finally have a DOT office in the valley, we finally have the mayor who's the signator of the new nonprofit MPO. So governor's coming out next week, finally have a bona fide seat at the table with a vote to say, the $10 million you get from the feds, you really need to put it here at Palmer, back me up, let's do this. So I think it falls well under four. It's not specific to that, but that's a big infrastructure project that we finally have a lot more power in. And so the next process is these traffic studies, we get all the data, they do really interesting things with delay time, all that stuff, and we show them and we say, we've been ignoring this, let's deal with this.
Sounds good.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion to exit committee of the whole?
Madam Mayor, I move to exit committee of the whole.
Is there a second?
Madam Mayor, I second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Vlock to exit committee of the whole. Is there objection to the motion? There are none. The time is 8:11. We are now out of committee of the whole, we're on to audience comments, we have no audience. So, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So obviously, unless there's objection from the body, I'm going to cancel tomorrow's goals and initiatives meeting. We did already publish the agenda for Monday, which you all have there with the financial reports and everything in there, so that's some good reading for everybody to be prepared for Monday's meeting. And so because we've already published that agenda, I just ask at the beginning of Monday meetings, we'll strike a discussion on goals and initiatives because we've completed that tonight. And that's all I have.
And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Craft.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Staff, thank you guys so much for coming tonight. I'm glad this wasn't three hours long and appreciate all the flowing discussion. Same with the council, I feel like we're really setting up for a bright future for Wasilla and some of the, the ideas that we're, we're working towards. Thanks all for being here and willing to engage and apologies, Madam Mayor, for us jumping in on conversation. I think we're all just really excited and have something we wanted to share. Thank you all, and we'll see you Monday.
Councilmember Graham.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also, my thanks to the staff for coming, being well-prepared to speak on a variety of things that you probably didn't think you'd have to speak on. But everybody's input is important and that's why it's, you know, that's why we call it committee of the whole, is so we can, everybody can have input. Doesn't mean that we're going to agree, it just means that we're all going to have input, so. So hopefully nobody got bent out of shape or anything like that. We're just trying to, as Mr. Craft had said, to move the city forward, to kind of determine what that's going to look like in the, you know, next fiscal year as we go along. You know, we talked several times today about DOT. As you're well aware, the Matsui Transportation Fair was canceled last month. I believe it's been rescheduled for January 24th.
My fifth.
25th at the, once again, at the Menard Center.
That's incorrect. It's at the fairgrounds.
It's at the fairgrounds, okay.
At the fairgrounds, Raven Hall.
Check facts.
All right. Well, the important part is that it has, it has been rescheduled and that is your opportunity to talk one-on-one with the project engineers for each project. It's, it's citizens' opportunity to talk one-on-one, you know, and you can talk as, you know, if you're a council member, you can talk about things that we've talked about here at this dias, and we can talk about things that are important to our neighborhood or are personally important to us. And believe it or not, they do a darn good job of taking notes. I've been going to those for years and they do a fantastic job. That's where I first brought up this invasive weed thing, was at a transportation fair, so. But, so please put on your schedule January 25th at the fairgrounds, probably Raven Hall, to go out and talk to DOT. But not only DOT will be there, will be there, City of Wasilla will be there, City of Palmer will be there, Matsui Borough will be there. You can talk about whatever projects are out there and they will have experts in those projects at the table, not just somebody there to hand out brochures, so. So please include that in your schedule. And I would just ask that once these edits have been made, that we get an eye at least, and I would assume everybody else would like a clean copy of the goals and initiatives as edited.
Well, again, those will be in the, a meeting in January's packets, so I, you know, we don't generally release things and we'll give them time to get it all ready and we'll do a clean copy.
Yeah, because I'd like to have a couple of weeks to look at them, not just a couple of days. So, thanks, thanks everybody for being here, appreciate it. Great audience today.
Councilmember Johnson.
I don't have anything.
Okay, Councilmember Rubio.
I'll keep it short. Thank you, staff. Awesome. And council, great work.
Councilmember Viallak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to thank the staff and for the work you did on the goals and initiatives, and you tell us very thoughtful. And, yeah, I'm glad we have some differing opinions because we're representing people with a lot of differing opinions. And my mom always told me, maybe the place, the world would be a boring place if everyone was just like you. So, and so that's why we're here, to represent everyone, so thank you.
Okay. Ashley, thank you so much for being the scribe. So, and thank all of you for coming. Staff, you do a great job. That's the reason I trust you. So, in council, you know what? We agree more than we disagree. And I think that moving Wasilla forward in a responsible manner is up front and foremost. And we do have growing pains and we will continue to have growing pains because, like I say, every time Anchorage has an assembly meeting, we get a new business and now we're getting five more families, so. And I told Mayor Bronson that yesterday, he didn't appreciate it too much, you know. Anyway.
But he doesn't disagree.
No, he didn't. He didn't. He's like, yes, I've heard you say that. And I'm like, really? So anyway, but thank you all so much, council, everybody, good job. So with no further business at hand, I'm adjourning the meeting unless objection is raised. There are none, the meetings are adjourned at 8:17.
Tim Johnson.
I said, once I got on the council there, I wasn't sure who was going to be the new Ian in the audience.
He's there, you just can't see him.
I said, once I joined the council, I was like, who's going to be the new Ian?
Nobody. Nobody.